Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the December 10th Planning Board meeting, last one of the year. Please start with the pledge. Just have a few announcements. There are emergency exits to this room on your left and right, off the sides, or out back in either front or back of the building. The restrooms are out the doors behind you and to the left. Please be sure to sign the attendance sheet if you have not this evening already, whether you're a presenter or someone in the audience. There are business cards back at the back table next to the sign-in sheet that you can take with you if you need planning department contact information, emails, phone numbers. And also back there are copies of any resolutions that we will be reading tonight along with the agenda. Please silence your cell phones so you don't disturb those who are presenting or discussing business with the board. And please take all conversations that you may have amongst yourselves out the door and close the door behind you so that it doesn't disturb those here in the meeting. We have quite a few items on the agenda this evening. One public hearing and two, actually, three, not in order, so I'll let you know. But the first item we have for this evening, approval of meeting minutes. Lisa has two of them, September 10th and 24th. Does anyone have any changes, edits for Lisa?
No.
Hearing none. Are they both full?
Joe Limbeck does not have either one.
Okay. It looks like we are... I want to say I might have been out for the 10th also. No, I was here for the 10th, right? Okay. All right. So four of us, anyway. So I'll make a motion, take a motion for approval of both the 910 and the 924, 2024 meeting minutes.
I'll move.
I'll move.
Okay.
Thirty seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Carried four with one abstention. Correspondence. We've received a couple of pieces. One from Deborah Illick regarding Howling Hills, Carol Fisher regarding Chick-fil-A. And we have two other items here. Board committee updates. Drew is here, I believe, from Town Board.
Good evening. Dr. Kuzamata, Town Board. Very, very brief. I know you have a busy agenda for this evening. Our most recent full meeting of the Town Board on November 25th primarily resulted in passing resolutions for 2025 agreements for law enforcement, court security, the enhanced law enforcement that we do at the town, agreements for next year for our ambulance corps, and then for dog control services, which is an annual contribution to the county for those services. Aside from that, really, the big discussion point I would have is what you're already going to see from Councilwoman Oger this evening. So I will leave that entirely to her. And then the only other comment I wanted to make was specific to the mall property. So I will be leaving shortly, but I will be on the rest of the meeting just watching on YouTube. So certainly I'll be taking notes and can follow up on any matters that we have. It'll be tomorrow, though, that I do that. But specific to the mall, I think in general terms, my personal stance is I'm of relative support of bringing business to the town. That makes sense. Chick-fil-A is something that I think piques a lot of interest on both sides, but I think that it's something that should be certainly considered in due diligence from my perspective to see if it's something feasible. The one thing I think we should take in consideration and keep in mind as we move through the process is Black Friday this past week or two up at the mall, we saw a pretty substantial traffic issue. And certainly that's one day out of the year. But I think as we bring more and more up there, and you know, hopefully in the next few years, we have some really good development occurring on that property, but we do need to consider that there might go from one day to a handful of days or several days per year where we're dealing with some pretty substantial traffic up in that corridor, especially getting out of the mall with the reduced light cycle timing from the mall property out onto 96, which is even though there are several access points into the mall, that's one corridor, and it's not like we can enter off of both sides. So I'm, in general terms, very supportive of making sure we create a very economically survivable and prosperous area up there. But traffic is certainly something, as we saw over the last few weeks, it's good to see traffic rebounding from COVID and coming back into the town of Victor, but it's something that we need to certainly consider as we safely develop further. So thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you, Drew. Planning Board update. Keith?
Good evening. Keith Maynard, project manager for the town of Victor. So your next planning board agenda in January 14th, thank you, at 7:00 PM in this meeting, or in this room. First item on the agenda, the Crown Castle T-Mobile at 914 Brownsville Road. Applicant is requesting approval to remove and replace antennas at the existing wireless community facility. Item number two is Bell Atlantic Verizon Wireless 200 Cobblestone Court. Applicant is requesting approval to remove and replace antennas at existing wireless community facility, communication facility. Item number three is Aladdin's 8053 State Route 96. Applicant is requesting approval for a site plan modification to allow exterior seating by retrofitting the existing landscape area on the east side of the building. And then item number four is Element by Weston, which is a proposed hotel at East U-Mall. 100 to 1020 East U-Mall. Applicant is requesting approval to develop a new four-story, 23,580 square foot hotel with 123 rooms on a 91.4 acre parcel. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Keith.
Yep.
Okay. Our first item is a discussion on local laws. And Alexis Oger from the Town Board has a presentation for us.
Good evening, everybody. It's good to be back. Before I start, I did want to say, I'm not sure if you were told, but on early voting for next year, Susie reached out to the Board of Elections to see if hopefully they could move some of the, change some of the hours so that you don't have to have one of your meetings changed.
That would be great.
Fingers crossed. They said they would let us know after Election Day. They do have a new commissioner coming in, who I will say I personally know. So I told her, I'm already bugging her on day one, to see if she and her fellow commissioner can come to an agreement on that, because she comes from town government as well. So I'm hoping, fingers crossed, you guys don't have to change some rounds. I know it's, it can be very annoying and tedious.
Okay.
But to get to why I'm really here, solar law. So presented, wanted to introduce myself, Alexis Oger, Victor Town Board. We introduced the solar moratorium now, it was over six months ago, probably like six or eight. We have done one extension, and we've not fulfilled the entire extension. I'm hoping that we'll have, tomorrow, the county planning board will be reviewing the solar law, and then at the next Town Board meeting, we'll have a public hearing, and probably after that, at the first meeting in January, we'll hopefully be able to have a vote. So that's kind of looking at the timeline here. But to talk about who developed the new solar law and made the recommended changes is the, what I've called, the Victor Solar Task Force. So to introduce everybody, and I think hopefully everybody knows each other, Keith Maynard from the town, myself, part of the Town Board, Mike Guinan on the Town Board, Adam, our code enforcement officer, Rob Brenner, who's a local Victor resident, Mike Reinhardt, who is the ZBA chairman, Wes Petty, who you guys are no stranger to, from La Bella Associates, Frank Pavia, our town attorney, and Scott Harner, one of your fellow board members. So what are we addressing? Want to start by saying we are addressing large-scale solar power plants, energy facilities, but they're not farms, which I'll always, you know, plug my personal one in there. They are not farms. Farms make food. These make power. We set out to protect residents' ability to use solar panels on their own properties to power themselves, and we're really trying to focus on, you know, your large-scale solar. So where we started, when we dove into this, we really went in to try and address every aspect. It had been probably about a decade since the original town solar code had come about, and there's been a lot of changes within New York, within the industry itself, about how things are regulated, how things have come about. So we tried to delve as far into the process as possible. So here's kind of where we settled on our, really our first meeting, and what we referenced repeatedly throughout our months of the task force meeting. Biggest thing that I think everybody asks is where and zoning. So currently, really allowed anywhere, but we addressed where and zoning. Risk management, this was one where I will say, I kind of gave, we all kind of gave kudos to the lawyers on our committee, which we had three. So they really dove after strengthening definitions and other areas of the code so that they weren't ambiguous. There are a few things there that were kind of up for interpretation. We wanted to make much more clear. Protecting residential use solar, so like I said before, making sure people can still, you know, if you want to put something on your roof, that we don't disturb that right. Decommissioning, so what happens at the end of the life for the solar panels? We looked at a panel recycling requirement. Who's going to have the final approval? Pilot agreements, a fee structure, and actually, the recommendation of the county planning board, wanted to also address battery storage. So biggest question is where? And if you'll see, one map over here, we have printed for everyone, but also on the screen, this thick blue line here, all the way up around the mall, as well as down here, is where we put our solar, proposed solar overlay zoning district. So that's where large-scale solar would be allowed. And...
Is that the Syracuse mine?
Yes.
Or former Syracuse mine?
Yep.
Okay. Just per orientation between Dryer and...
Yes.
Elton Hill?
Yep.
Okay. And then the rest, pretty...
The rest, yeah. We looked at more, like you said, kind of industrial business uses. You know, when you're talking about large-scale solar, it's not, you know, not an agricultural use, obviously not a residential one, et cetera. So that's kind of where we focus. That's where a lot of our business is for the town, and where we felt that our solar would make sense as well.
So this is, just for clarity, this is for commercial solar?
Yes.
Fields, I'll call it?
Yes.
And not for, if you're an individual with a high energy demand, or, I mean, there is a large solar field up by Omni Tech Park at the center. There's a hill?
Yep.
Facility right up on top there that has, that's not part of this, right? Because they're self-sufficient?
Yeah. So if you were looking to power, whether it be your own home or your own business, as long as it was, I believe the specific amount is 110% that you are, you know, using, you're not generating more than that, you would be still by right.
Thank you.
Risk management, and this is one where it's kind of, we've done throughout the code. So there's no real specific spots to point out, but there were some areas where it was really left kind of ambiguous, maybe up for interpretation. So we, kind of, as I jokingly still say, put the lawyers to it, and they took out the "ors" and made it sure that it's, you know, definite aspects into the code. Residential use. So residential use is treated differently than large scale, and reference the portion of our town code there where solar systems are permitted by right. And then also, if you see at the bottom, where, who would require a special use permit? Decommissioning. So decommissioning, I think really at the beginning of this was probably maybe second to the where and the zoning that we wanted to address. How that would be done, a lot of the projects, like we've seen, really haven't, since, you know, solar arrays have become more prevalent in the state, and really the country haven't really reached their end of life yet. And we, you know, wanted to make sure we were protecting the town, protecting land, to make sure that, you know, when 25, 35 years comes about, that we had the correct amount of money there to prepare, to make sure that the fields could be put back to, you know, their original use, and to really protect the town if anything were to happen with a company. Should they sell? Should they go out of business, et cetera? And one of the biggest things that I'll say we did was, that I wanted to highlight, was instituting an annual report. So the amount of the surety and could be changed and a different estimated cost every year. We'll reopen that. They'd have to submit a report. And should the Town Board feel necessary, change the actual amount that the decommissioning would cost. Okay. Panel recycling requirement. This is something that we looked at at implementing in Victor, but I think we really collectively decided that this was something more maybe for a countywide implementation, or really even a statewide implementation. Niagara County, near the Buffalo area, which I'd say almost very similar to us in Ontario County, because they are more rural, they're outside of, you know, they're outside of Erie County, we're outside of Monroe County. Similar demographics there. They implemented a local law requiring producers to finance solar panel recycling so that, and this also included four homes, too, or if you're powering your own business, where if you wanted to sell solar panels, install solar panels, et cetera, the company who made the solar panels would need to have a plan in place with the county to recycle those at the end of their life. It's something they actually took from, I believe it was State CLCPA, to kind of institute. State has never acted on it. I think because it would make it very challenging, but it's something that they've done in Niagara County. We somewhat looked at, but decided ultimately probably not the best for maybe the town to do, but maybe on a countywide basis, better. Who will have approval? So as you can all see, your lovely faces there, as well as the lovely faces of our Town Board. So Town Planning Board would still go through site plan approval, and then ultimately, Town Board would have approval on the final project. Pilot agreements, and here's my one joke, no, not that kind of pilot. Thank you, Joe, for the laugh. So pilot as in payment in lieu of taxes. And TBD, really, Town Board decision, but also to be determined. It was something that we discussed quite heavily in the solar task force, but something that we really didn't come to a conclusive agreement on, that we can make a recommendation to the Town Board on. So something, you know, I'm looking to discuss more with the Town Board with, and what I did yesterday during our workshop as well. The way that the solar arrays are taxed right now, in the town of Victor, we do require that they get a pilot, which would go through the county. Should they not, should we not have that on the books? They would not be taxed that increase in value for, I believe it's 15 years. So we do have that already on the books. However, the state, two years ago, implemented a new assessment formula. So you, you know, the town assessor would have that formula to assess the arrays every year, and, but you can still do a pilot if you want. However, that pilot no longer can be more than what the assessed value would be. So it's kind of a double-edged sword there as to what you do, because we don't know what the formula is going to look like year after year, but you don't know on the pilot either. It's a bit of a crapshoot. Fee structure, and this is for the building permit. Large-scale solar PV systems would have a $100 initial fee and then a $10 per kilowatt fee as well. And then large-scale battery storage, that is something we really just outright banned in the town code. It's something that we heard from our counterparts over at the town of Canandaigua, who recently went through this process, I think about a year, maybe a year and a half ago. And they also did a full, full ban. They, you know, went with it really because of the uncertainty with battery storage right now. And if you'll see the photo I included, it's a photo from up in the north country, a battery fire that they had last year. And it was burning for days, a significant strain on their emergency services, fire, county, et cetera. So it was something that we ultimately decided to try and outright ban right now.
Were there, is it any kind of batteries, or specifically lithium?
Specifically, like the large, the lithium storage.
Okay. So you could have lead acid, for instance, not that that's efficient, but, you know, I don't know if they've just banned all batteries or certain types. Adam's like nodding his head.
Yeah. So, all right, Adam, code enforcement. So any type of battery over 1 megawatt AC?
Okay.
Is prohibited.
All right.
And I believe we allowed up to that much because you can use some battery storage on-site to power the facility itself.
Okay. Thank you.
With that, does anyone have questions?
So if I'm a farmer and my heirs don't want to continue the farm, I might invite somebody to put in a solar farm or a subdivision, but if I'm not in the district, the solar farm would be out?
Yep.
Okay.
You could probably still try and sell them your land before they figured out that they couldn't put it there.
Okay.
Now?
I was just going to say, I read through the zoning statute. I thought it was very well done, very comprehensive. I did just have one question on the where, like what ultimately was, went into the decision-making process of where to draw the boundaries?
So let me just go back so I can see the map on my side. I think the ultimate thing we were looking at, there were a few different factors, and we looked at different types of maps as well. You know, where it would be viable in the town, given size typically of large solar arrays. Where we kind of thought it fit, and here comes my ZBA hat, fit with the character of the neighborhood. And that's where we really determined that the, you know, portions of our town that are almost more residential or agricultural in aspect, we didn't, not that we didn't want to see it there, but it didn't fit in. It was not, you know, a good use for the land. And in the, you know, area where we have it zoned now, it is more of an industrial use. It is protected, I'd say, from a large amount of our residents from, you know, residential areas. And it's where a lot of commerce is already. So whether it be warehouses, businesses with in-and-out traffic consistently, it's something that people are used to, and this being, we felt solar arrays fit more of like an industrial, commercial use.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome.
Scott, you were on the committee.
I don't, I don't really have any comments. I mean, I think it was well explored, well, well discussed. I think, I think it was a very good experience for me. I was particularly interested in the environmental aspects of it, and kind of examining it to see what, if anything, kind of jumped out at me environmentally. And I have, I have to admit that with the setbacks that we have required and landscaping requirements and other items, I think it's, environmental impacts are well addressed.
Hey, are any questions?
I think this is needed. We had, almost had it run in earlier this year. Almost had it run in earlier this year, with a solar farm, which was first in one place and then in another place. Neither one of which, I thought, was appropriate for the, to the place. But having this on the books, I think is going to help a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, me too.
Take some of the guesswork out of it, for sure. Wes, any comments? The only other item, and thank you, Alexis, I appreciate it, unless you have any other comments, is that I think the Town Board has asked to be lead agency and on this, so we need to make a vote on it.
So before you guys vote, if I could just say, and a quick shout out to those who are here, Keith, Adam, Wes, Scott, I think that's it. A huge thank you. This was not something easy that we undertook. It was months in the making, lots of meetings, lots of discussion, and we came to what I think is a really good new solar overlay district and a new code. So I just want to say thank you publicly to everybody here.
Thanks. Speaking of code enforcement, Adam, you wanted to say anything to the board, or you're all...
Anyone had specific questions, I could answer them.
Okay. Hearing none. Thank you, Alexis. I appreciate the conversation and the presentation. And it's certainly very informative, and it's been well done and well received, it seems like. So with that, and we need a motion to accept the Town Board's request to become lead agents, agency on this. So the project is the proposed law, which shall amend and/or replace Chapter 103, Article 1 of the Town Code entitled Solar Photovoltaic Systems. And the statement is, I, we, Board of Victor Town Planning Board, have no objections to the designation of the Victor Town Board as lead agency for the project under SEACR. So with that, they are a motion for accepting?
I'm both.
No moves?
Second.
Thirty seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Carried five zero. So Town Board will advance that. Okay. The first item on the public agenda this evening is Phoenix Mills Landscape and pergola. This is a public hearing. It's open. It's at 10410 Phoenix Mills Plaza, Zone Commercial Light Industrial Owner, Handler and Associates, LLC. And the applicant's requesting approval to construct a 12-by-20 pergola in the front grass area of the existing plaza. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Good.
So...
I just need your name and...
Oh, yes. I'm Wendy from Phoenix Mills Plaza, here to talk about the pergola and answer any questions that you might have about it.
Okay. About it, just a discussion as to where it is and what the views are. We can kind of review that, if you would?
Sure. So this is going to go in the front area, grass area of Phoenix Mills Plaza. It has been staked out for a few weeks. I don't know if anybody's noticed it, but we had some stakes out there. It's going to go about, well, I figured it 27 feet from the setback, but I think, Adam, you had, or somebody had figured out better numbers of how much we're going into a setback for the zoning board. Basically, what we're going to do is just put a pergola up there that's about 12 by 20, and it's going to have some topsoil brought in to bring it up, the ground up a little bit. We're going to put some mulch there and some pavers around the edge of it, kind of like a landscaping area, kind of like the clock area that's out front already with the same kind of shrubberies and flowers. And that's it. It was just going to be something for decorative use. No signage, no lighting, just a decorative piece in the grass.
Questions from the board? Joe, start with your end.
I'm curious why a pergola and not a fly...
I'm curious why a pergola and not a flower bed. I mean, I don't have any objections to a pergola, but I'm curious about the thought process behind it.
Honest, my dad, who owns the plaza and built the plaza, saw it somewhere in Florida and thought it looked great and said he would like to do it here.
Okay. That's all I've got.
Al?
No, no questions.
Okay. Scott?
I don't have any questions.
Nor do I.
Wow. That's unusual. This is a public hearing, so I guess I'd like to give that opportunity to the public. If there's anyone here that'd like to step up, just state your name and your address and any question you might have for the applicant. Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move.
Second.
Moves, Scott seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Carried. So with that, I guess the only thing I was concerned about when I saw this, and I'll be a little contrarian, is you're looking from 96 to the plaza. It just seems like an odd thing to be setting apart from the building, it's sort of an obstruction to seeing the building from the plaza, but, and so I guess I, I was questioning why not just a nice flower bed with the nice stone walls and stuff rather than putting a structure up?
Right.
And this is not Florida for these kinds of structures, so I, I guess I was curious as to why.
I guess he had a vision and thinks it's going to have a nice display, give it some nice look in the grass area to, yes, you're right, we could have just done a simple flower bed, but he wanted to add a little bit more of a look. Actually, I was in the town of Pittsford yesterday and realized they have the same thing. Actually, I think it is the same one, sitting in the back there by like where the bank and the library and all that is, and it's just sitting in an area with, I don't even think they have chairs or anything under it, maybe they do, but same kind of idea. I guess he wanted to bring some kind of character and look besides just a flower bed.
So this will, I mean, I see two pictures, one is the pergola with flowers.
Well, right, because that is what I pulled off to say here, this is what it looked like, and then I was able to have one drawn up to show that we're obviously not going to have a sitting area, things, it's just going to be flowers, low shrubberies, it's going to be taken care of just like it does in the clock area. And it's not going to be very tall, I figured it out, it's not going to go over nine feet, so it's not a tall structure. It shouldn't take away any of the look to, for anybody to see any of the businesses or see what's in there. It was just going to be an added look to add to the front of the plaza.
Okay. Wes, I assume there's no other elements that we need to be concerned about in terms of placement or?
No, not, this project wasn't referred to Labella, but I don't think there's anything that, that we would have in terms of comments.
Okay. Well, with that, we do have a resolution for approval. The public hearing is closed, and I can read it if you guys are all set to vote on this application. Whereas the planning board made the following findings a fact, and this is the Phoenix Mills Landscape and Pergola at 10410 Phoenix Mills. And there are nine whereses. County Planning Board did refer the application back to the referring agency as a class one and to the board. So whereas the town of Victor Planning Board reviewed the unlisted action on December 10th, 2024, and identified no significant impacts, now therefore be it resolved that the project Phoenix Mills Landscaping and Pergola will not have a significant impact on the environment and that a negative declaration be prepared. Now therefore be it resolved that the application of Handler and Associates LLC site plan entitled Phoenix Mills Landscape and Pergola drawn by Edward Summerhay, dated May 7th, 2012, received 2012?
Yeah, 2012.
Okay, received by the planning board October 11th, 2024. Board application number 31 SB 2024 be approved with the following conditions, conditions to be addressed prior to chairman's signature. Number one is standard, number two, that the comments for the code enforcement officer dated December 3rd, 2024 be addressed. Ongoing conditions. First one is a standard, second, that the pergola is purely for aesthetic purposes, there will be only flowers, shrubs, and greenery, is not for public use, and no one will be sitting under it. There will be no lighting and no signage, and the height will be approximately nine feet tall, all accurate, I am presuming?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And that a building permit be obtained prior to the start of construction, and be it further resolved that the planning board secretary distribute the planning board's approval letter. So with that, do I hear a motion for approval?
I move.
Any moves?
Second.
Joe Limbeck seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Carried five zero.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, third item on the agenda this evening, Postler and Jekyll Expansion. This is not a public hearing. 51 Victor Heights Parkway, applicants requesting approval to construct 20,200 square foot addition to the western side of the existing building. And I guess the resolution was approved at the ZBA December 2nd for an area variance to reduce the setback to 65 feet from the required 100 feet. Good evening.
Good evening, Matt Tomlinson, Marathon Engineering. Just wanted to give the board a couple of updates since the last time we were here, we were waiting for county planning to comment on the project, as well as appearing as mentioned at the zoning board. We did obtain two variances, both related to that east property line, 44 feet to the pavement area, 65 to the building, so I just wanted to mention that, but we were successful with both of those variances. We've received comments, including a couple that, that came in from code enforcement, fire marshal I saw didn't have any further comments, and we've reviewed the prospective conditions, don't have any issue with those. A couple of pieces of information that were provided to the board in the interim between our last meeting and this one was a lighting plan, just showing all the building mounted lighting that's proposed and existing. We're not proposing any site lighting poles, they'll just be what's required on the walls for building safety at doorways, egress for, to meet building code, they'll be dark sky compliant. We also just had a clarification conversation, myself and Adam, earlier today as it related to paving the north driveway that's shared between the lots, the prospective owner is purchasing 61 Victor Heights Parkway as well. If they decide to pave that because it crosses the property line, we'd either have to go back for another variance or adjust the lot line administratively. We'll do that in the future, that's not a concern of theirs, but they do need to move forward with approvals in order to close on the property and that kind of thing. So for purposes of plans getting signature, we'll leave that unpaved, we'll modify the plan prior to that in addressing all these comments, but I just wanted to explain that draft condition to the board because it was a little bit of a late add from our part. So that's it, unless the board has any questions.
Thank you. So I'll open up to the board, we'll start with Ernie, any questions?
No, I went through this once before and I'm all set with that.
Okay, Scott?
I don't have any more questions, no.
Okay, Al?
All set.
Joe?
It appears all the comments from code, et cetera, have been addressed, so I'll defer to Wes since he, if there's anything else.
Wes, any comments?
Yeah, so we did issue a comment letter dated November, I think it was November 12th, and the applicant has responded to our comments. So one of the things that we called out was a one-on-one slope, and so the proposed one-on-one slope, it's not that much, it's really not different than what's out there today. So there is a selected erosion control blanket that's going to be used according to the plans, which is appropriate for the one-on-one slope, I think that's fine. So we've, we've also got an update from our stormwater engineer. The applicant provided a stormwater management memorandum detailing the design of a water quality device categorized as a hydrodynamic separator, and this device is intended to address total suspended solids removal associated with the roof of the building addition, so this device is appropriate for this application, and we note that the regular maintenance of the device is required to ensure long-term functionality and performance. So we will finalize our, our comment letter and get that out, but it appears that all of our comments have been addressed, so we should be set.
Great, thanks Wes.
Yep.
Okay, nothing else for me either, so unless you have any other items, we, we do have a resolution drafted, as Ernie mentioned, we have seen this and talked about it quite a bit, so. For the resolution, 51 Victor Heights Parkway, whereas the planning board made the following findings a fact, and there are 14 of them. Therefore be resolved that the application of Eric Postler and, of Postler and Jekyll Site Plan entitled Postler and Jekyll Expansion drawn by Marathon Engineering dated October 8th, 2024, last revised November 25th, 2024, received by the planning board October 8th, 2024, planning board application 28 SB 2024 be approved with the following conditions, conditions that to be addressed prior to the chairman's signature on the site plan. Item one is standard, item two, the comments in a letter dated October 23rd from Architect Consultant be addressed. At the comments, number three, the comments in a letter dated December 4th, 2024, from the town of Farmington Water and Sewer be addressed. Number four, comments in letter dated November 12th, 2024, from Labella Associates be addressed. Number five, comments in a letter dated December 4th, from the conservation, construction inspector be addressed. And number six, that the comments in a letter dated December 9th, 2024, from the code enforcement officer be addressed. Ongoing conditions, one and two are standard, number three, that any exterior lighting be compliant to code and approved by the code enforcement officer, and I believe you've addressed those in your earlier comments. Number four, should the applicant decide that the existing stone driveway that transcends the northern property line is to be paved, site plan modification may be required. Number five, that a building permit be obtained prior to the start of construction, and be it further resolved that the planning board secretary distribute the planning board's approval letter. So on that resolution, do I hear a motion for approval?
I move.
Any moves?
Second.
Al seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Carried five zero.
Great, thank you very much.
Item number four this evening, Storybook Farm Veterinary Hospital. This is not a public hearing. The applicant is requesting approval to construct 2,400 square foot expansion to their existing facility to provide additional space for patrons and staff. Resolution by the ZBA was approved December 2nd for an area variance to reduce the setback to 65 feet from the required 100 feet.
Good evening, everyone.
I'm James Kritikos with BME Associates. Also here with me this evening is Dr. Anne Lil, the owner of Storybook Farms, as well as Dan Peters from Labella Associates, the architect on the project. As the chairman just mentioned, since the last meeting, we did attend the zoning board meeting and get their front area subpack variance to allow us to build a portion of the silo feature as well as the front porch addition to the building. Since then, we've also had, received comments from material county planning board, they were minor. We've provided responses to those last Friday, along with responses to the town engineer and code enforcement comments that were still outstanding, along with revised plans for that.
Excuse me, James, if you, hold on a second. Keith, would you mind closing the doors, there's some conversation, maybe they can't, but we've got decorations in the way. Yeah. As long as you don't pop them, Keith.
It's okay.
Maybe just ask them to move around the corner. Thanks, guys. All right.
So, so since then, really the only change on the plans based on the comments we received was the elimination of the ground illumination fixtures that we had around the silo, as well as the parking lot side of the building. The architects has changed those, we're going to do cam lighting with down lighting fixtures kind of in the, the soffit areas to provide the same kind of illumination on the building, but be compliant with the code and dark sky. Besides that, there really wasn't any questions from the board members last time, besides Mr. Santoro had a question about the dog and kennel use, and just to kind of provide some further clarification on that, as I mentioned at the last meeting, the kenneling is not a service that Storybook offers to clientele any longer. They really just use the kennels for moving dogs around within the facility as needed, whether they have a couple of big dogs that need to be separated in and out, or as I mentioned, some amenities to the employees if they need a place to keep their dog while they're working on shift for the day. I did provide a, kind of a zoomed out context aerial, just to kind of show where the property sits in relation to the adjoining properties.
Is that the one you want, or the other one?
The other one, it's a little more zoomed out.
Nope, there's two renderings, it might be the first.
That one, there you go. So right here, this is our application, I just wanted to show kind of a relation to, you know, the 96 and Main Street Fisher's corridor. So we're commercially zoned property, we have other commercial properties, the Burger King, as well as the M&amp;T Bank to the west of us, there's a PDD for the car wash to the north, and then to the east and south, these are both light industrial zoned properties, there is a residential use here. This is probably the only business in this area that predates Storybook, I think, you know, we've been there for close to 40 years now. Obviously, Storybook's been there well before all these other uses, so there really is no other residential uses. I know Mr. Santoro mentioned hearing the dogs barking at the bank, but it's kind of just, you know, minor in our consideration, you know, this is really an appropriate place for this, having the ability to, you know, use dogs in and outside and use those kennels as needed is really kind of critical to the function of their business. We're not really asking to, you know, change that or do any kenneling or offer that, we're just trying to, you know, maintain the existing uses and, you know, continue to operate the business. Obviously, if there's any complaints or issues from a code compliance standpoint, I'm sure we would have heard about it by now after 40 years, and if something does come up or, you know, outside the noise ordinance or causing an issue to neighbors, I'm positive Storybook would address the issue. Besides that, we can answer any other questions on the building, the design, or the business operations if you have them.
Okay.
I don't have any questions, I think it's well presented.
Ernie?
I asked all my questions last time.
Okay, Al?
All set.
Joe?
All set.
Okay, anything from your end, Wes?
All set here.
Okay. Yeah, no, I think we kind of expected, since you've presented most of it last time and we had only a few questions, I love the fact that it's kind of looks like a farm when, when they're all done, said and done with the building, so it fits, fits well with the business and I'm very happy that they're expanding. So with that, we do have a resolution for approval of this application, which I will read. Application 27 SB 2024, whereas the planning board made the following findings a fact, there are 12 of them. Whereas the town of Victor, town code chapter 211, 271 F2D, allows for the reasonable reduction of parking spaces required in the 96 to 51 overlay district and shall be permitted by the town of Victor Planning Board. And whereas the town of Victor Planning Board allows an 80-foot setback for parking to be reduced to 32 feet, now therefore be it resolved that the application of Storybook Farm Veterinary Hospital Site Plan entitled Storybook Farm Vet Edition drawn by BME Associates dated October 8th, 2024, last revised December 6th, 2024, received by the planning board October 8th, 2024. Planning board application 27 SB 2024B approved with the following conditions, conditions to be addressed prior to the chairman's signature on the site plan. First one is standard, second one, comments dated, in a letter dated November 12th, 2024, from Labella Associates be addressed. Ongoing conditions, number one, two, and four are standards. Second, number two, number three, that any exterior lighting to be compliant to code and approved by the code enforcement officer, and be it further resolved that the planning board secretary distribute the planning board's approval letter. So with that resolution, do I hear motion for approval?
Move.
Any moves?
Second.
Scott seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Carried five zero.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you guys very much, we really appreciate it.
You're welcome. Okay, item number five. This is preliminary final application action here, is 115117 Victor Heights Parkway subdivision. Owners Victor Heights Campus LLC. This is a public hearing and it's open. The applicant is requesting approval to subdivide 3.78 acre parcel into two separate parcels. There are currently two existing 16,000 square foot buildings on the parcel.
major issue.
Yeah. I mean, if I'm delivering stuff to the building to the west, I still have to come in from the building.
I think you really could come in either way, in and out, but just it makes a lot more sense to sort of share ingress and egress.
Okay. Those are the, the traffic circulation thing is what most concerned me, I guess, and, you know.
And even when we own, like, with our intention of owning both, and we spoke to the town about, one of these is want to put up a fence, and that raised a whole pile of issues with, hey, how do we get the fire trucks in and out and, you know, Knox boxes and access? And, you know, we addressed those concerns then, but I assume the same concerns, you know, will come up again now.
Sure.
Two separate owners.
Okay. I'll open it up to the board for questions. Joe?
Nothing.
Al? Nothing?
Scott?
I guess the the question that comes to my mind is, how do you address side setback between the building? Is that satisfied where the property?
We've got invariances.
Oh, you got variances?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have two variances.
Okay. And then there's going to be some sort of access agreement between the two properties? So, the purpose of this is just to, so each property has its own tax ID number?
We couldn't sell one building off the other. And one, you know, the one building's been vacant since we purchased it over two years ago.
Okay.
And we, you know, we tried everything to retenant it, and we finally found somebody that said, we want to buy it, we don't lease it.
Okay. Okay, that answers my question.
There's actually two variances, one for 115 and then one for 117. The zoning board did.
This is right down the road from that other one we have before us, not tonight, but.
Yeah, same.
Are you aware of that other?
Yeah, just the, the, it's the first building on the street, the one that the Post, what was it, Posler, Jackal? Yeah, it's at the top of the street.
No, I meant the other one.
You're talking about the condos?
Yes.
Yeah, please.
Am I right?
It is down, is in the same development.
I thought.
That's down by FLCC.
Are you aware of that?
I was not aware of any condos yet.
Well, it hasn't been approved yet, but it's maybe.
Pending application.
We're pro-development. We're in favor of commercial development and improving tax tax rules.
Okay. Okay. I have no further questions, but Wes, any comments from Lobella's?
Yeah, Lobella did issue a comment letter dated December 4th, just some minor comments, really nothing of of note, right? We talked about the area variances. We'd like them to add a note on the subdivision plat indicating the date that they obtained those variances and what they were for, and then provide a signature block on the subdivision plat, and that's about it, so.
I believe that was all provided this afternoon.
Okay.
This still is an open public hearing, so I'll open the floor up to the public if anyone here wishes to. Does any questions, the board or the applicant? Now's the time. Being none, I guess I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Al moves.
Second.
Seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing's closed. I don't think we have anything else. I don't think we have any other questions. We have a draft resolution here somewhere. Here it is. Okay, yes. So, with that, we'll go through the draft resolution for this application. Oh, again. Oh, for application six PS 2024 and five FS 2024, whereas the planning board made the following findings in fact, and there are twelve of them. Whereas the Town of Victor Planning Board reviewed the unlisted action on December 10th, 2024, and identified no significant impacts, now therefore be resolved that the project 115, 117 Victor Heights Parkway subdivision will not have a significant impact on the environment and that a negative declaration be prepared. Now therefore be it resolved that regarding the preliminary and final plan application of Victor Heights Parkway, major subdivision entitled 115, 117 Victor Heights Parkway subdivision, drawn by Costas Engineering, dated June 12th?
Yes.
Twenty?
Changed that.
What's the date, actually? Is it 2018? Or is it a different date?
2018.
Okay. Received by the planning board September 6th, 2024. Planning Board Application six PS 2024 and five FS 2024 be approved with the following conditions. Conditions that must be met prior to chairman's signing the preliminary subdivision plan. Number one is standard. Number two, three are standard. Number four, the comments in a letter dated December 4th, 2024, from Lobella Associates be addressed. Number five, that a reciprocal easement and a common maintenance agreement be submitted in accordance with sections 184.8 driveway definition, 211.12 driveway definition, and 211.36 of the Victor Town Code. Conditions that are ongoing, standard condition that must be adhered to. Number one, that the major subdivision comply with the Town of Victor Design and Construction Standard Land Development, including section four. Number two is a standard. Number three is standard also, and be it further resolved that the Planning Board Secretary distribute the Planning Board's approval letter. And that date that I mentioned earlier that we were looking through, Lisa just cleared it up, it's June 25th, not the 12th. So, on the resolution, do I hear a motion for approval?
I'll move.
Bernie moves?
Second.
And Scott seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Grade five zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, preliminary application, Nicoloff subdivision. This is an open public hearing. Blazy Road, owner Keith Nicoloff, applicant's requesting approval to develop 42.4 acres into eight lots with driveways coming off Blazy Road. Good evening.
Good evening, planning board members, town officials, and citizens of Victor. I'm John Hato of LanTech Surveying and Engineering at 1105 Ridgeway Avenue, Rochester, here representing Mr. Keith Nicoloff, owner of this proposed project, eight lot residential subdivision project located on the west side of Blazy Road, bounded by Monroe County to the north and Victor Road to the west. This is our third appearance before the planning board, and tonight we're seeking a project preliminary site plan and seeker determination. Around November 26th, we submitted revised plans to Lobella Associates in response to their ongoing review process for the project. We did include a 17 lot concept plan there showing the conventional capacity of the project site for residential development. So, literally, that shows 17 lots that are code compliant as opposed to the eight lots that we're proposing for the current subdivision proposal. The current site plan will have approximately 22 acres of open space as required for 50% of the of the land. We also have converted the plans as requested to a larger scale to for graphic clarity. In the meantime, we've also received quite a bit of more detailed information from the Monroe County Water Authority regarding the water main extension from the north to the south to the site, and we're looking forward to working with the fire marshal to get some feedback from him on fire protection requirements. There are hydrants out there. There's one in Monroe County just north of the of the project site, and there's another one to the south of the project site on Blazy Road. And we're also proposing two more new ones by the new entrance driveways. We want to make sure that those are adequate for what the fire marshal's looking for. We've also added the an easement to the turnaround that's there on the west side of Blazy Road at our northeast corner for the town snowplow trucks to turn around. We'll definitely accommodate an easement for that. It's not a problem. We've also widened the common driveways from 20 feet to 22 per the Town Detail Standard, but we would like to continue not using concrete gutters since we're, our design, our stormwater design is based on swales and infiltration basins. Would be more applicable to not have the concrete gutters, and it would just look more rural and better fit for the setting down there. We've also expanded the interior turnarounds for the fire trucks as requested to the dimensional requirements and the standards. And as an update, all of the lots, except Lot 6, will have in-ground septic systems, and Lot 6 will not, will have a raised bed due to the percolation issues there. The, let's see, what else? A silt fence has been revised to be closer to the grading, grading disturbance areas as requested, and we are still looking for some input, and we'd like to get some advice on how to apply for the Planning Board waiver for the four lots on one driveway. Any questions?
Thank you. I guess I'll start with Scott.
Okay. Well, I was just taking a look at what we were left with here in terms of the packet, and I see a photograph of a lot of water on the street. A lot of, this is a flooding.
I did not submit that, but.
That was from the resident just north of the town.
Okay. Maybe we'll hear from them a little later. I guess the question that comes to mind after hearing some of the concerns about drainage is, I noticed that you're proposing individual homes have their own stormwater treatment systems, if I recall.
Infiltration.
And I was wondering if there might be another alternative such as bioretention area along the right-of-way, say, linear to the project that would perhaps eliminate the need for the individuals, which I have to presume would be difficult to maintain and take care of versus something more obvious to control from a, from a maintenance perspective, I guess. I wondered if you gave that any consideration versus the individual ones?
We have. We have thought about that carefully. It's my experience working in Victor that the infiltration basins work very, very well based on the porous soils in Victor. That's why I kind of ran with the infiltration basin. And based on my experience, doing both bioretention and infiltration, the bioretention is actually more maintenance. Infiltration basins don't have standing water. You're relying on the existing soils to recapture and recharge the groundwater from the stormwater runoff. Bioretention, you've got, you're adding these bioengineered soils. There's underdrain that has to be cleaned out. You have to provide clean outs for the underdrain. There's plants that are very oriented towards filtering the water. They they have to be maintained, trimmed, taken care of. Bio infiltration, you're basically, we're basically just providing a small area of lawn that's about two foot deep. That can just be mowed once a year. You can mow right over the top of it. They work great. I've had great luck with them, but it's all based on the existing soils. If you've got clay and stuff like that, it's not going to work.
Right, and I guess just a further comment is, the the intention with the bioretention comment is somewhat similar to the infiltration. It could be a linear infiltration area. Something similar to that exists. For example, at Victor Chevrolet on Route 96, the way that was designed, the water runs down from the parking area and gathers in that swale which which joins the right-of-way. And and the reason I say that is, I think, for the individual systems that you're proposing, how their ever, how their longevity can possibly be guaranteed is somewhat debatable. I mean, people, the normal resident, if you will, isn't getting up in the morning and thinking about their stormwater system and what they need to do to maintain it that day. They tend to, as with septic systems and other things, they tend to fade away and become maintenance issues in the future, based on my experience. Well, that's the reason I ask if there's another alternative to the individual units that you've shown, which are basically stormwater leach fields.
Well, I'll tell you what. We have plenty of room. We actually had swales along both of these common driveways. I'd be willing to explore the bioretentions within those swales, which is a perfect fit for that. And then, because there's really not that much runoff from this this project, and to start doing like a local regional bioretention, that's going to be heavy maintenance.
Yeah, I mean, my my recommendation would be to do something with with low maintenance, but I also am listening to the comments that are coming regarding drainage, and I think we would be remiss as a board to not take advantage of an opportunity to control the drainage very well, maybe over-control it, maybe be more conservative than we have to be.
Okay. Could you clarify the drainage comments that you're getting? Because I have not received any others except for the one.
Well, there's there's one in front of me right now dated November 11th. I'm talking about flooding, and I believe in a in a prior meeting, the adjoining residents spoke about flooding that occurs in their area. So, I think it's all headed in their direction across this property and portions of it. So, it occurs to me that there may be an opportunity here to make some, maybe maybe greater action than we would normally take under certain circumstances.
Yeah, we're open to that. Like I said, doing some bioretention in those swales I've already designed, it'd be a perfect fit. In regards to the the flooding issue there, just empirically, I went down there on a rainy day, and I know it's a confluence, it's a low point of a of a large watershed, no question about it. But, I'm going to take a look at the pictures of the situation there. Our property does contribute to that, to Mill Creek, there's no question about it, but it's not the primary watershed that contributes to that. And I think, as we mentioned in the last meeting, the primary issue there is the maintenance and the the clogged nature of the swell along the Isletz property. There's pictures in there showing the, what could be done to alleviate that flooding, and I think a lot of it is the maintenance of that swell along the driveway. I mean, I poked round back in there, and it's got dogwoods in there and box elders, big trees, and I'm not saying it needs to be clear cut or anything like that. I'm not, you know, it's a nice site there now, but we are not contributing to that problem. Most of the water's coming from Daly Road and further south from the other side, the east side of the road. And we've already shown in the SWIP that we're decreasing the runoff from the site to that point of discharge. I understand the the concern. I have the same, I have the same concern on our property, but we can't fix that. It it needs to be cleaned out. It's pretty obvious.
Scott?
I'm all set.
Bernie, comments, questions?
We've got two maps here. Which one are we dealing with here?
This map here was prepared. Our property does contribute to that, to Mill Creek, there's no question about it. But it's not the primary, um, watershed that contributes to that. And I think, as we mentioned in the last meeting, the primary issue there is the maintenance and, um, the, the, the clogged nature of the swell along the, um, Eilich's property. Um, there's pictures in there showing the, what could be done to alleviate that flooding. And I think a lot of it is the maintenance of that swell along the driveway. I mean, I poked round back in there, and it's got dogwoods in there and box elders, big trees. And I'm not saying it needs to be clear cut or anything like that. I'm not, you know, it's a nice site there now, but we are not contributing to that problem. Most of the water's coming from Daly Road and further south from, um, the other side of, east side of the road. And we've already shown in the SWIP that we're decreasing the runoff from the site to that point of discharge. I mean, I understand the, the concern. I'd have the same, I have the same concern on our property, but we can't fix that. It, it needs to be cleaned out. It's pretty obvious.
Scott?
I'm all set.
Bernie, comments, questions?
We've got two maps here. Which one are we dealing with here?
This map here was prepared at the request of the planning board to determine the conventional zoning requirement capacity, and that would be 17 lots.
So, the one you're proposing though is...
Eight.
This one. Uh, some of the residents nearby have submitted some photos of flooding. I don't know if any of this pre-existed, but...
I took those pictures like three weeks ago during a rainy day.
Yeah.
And it's just, it's just an observation, that's all it is. It's, it shows the amount of water coming from Daly Road and also coming from our wetland site. It's just a snapshot of what's happening when it rains. And it was not flooding that day, actually.
Okay.
Okay. Al? Anything? Joe?
So, at a previous meeting, uh, the discussion about flooding, uh, there was a question that arose about, uh, the, the creek going under Wilkinson Road. And I believe that the Town of Parenton categorically stated that it wasn't their problem, uh, that it was ours. Um, and I wonder if that's been affirmed in any way, um, or if it's just, you know, um, the, the Town of Parenton doesn't want to be bothered with it. Um, it seems to me that there could be, you know, more barriers to stream flow, um, that are, that are causing flooding or contributing to the flooding.
Question about it.
Um, so, again, legitimate concerns, I think, about flooding. And if there's something that, uh, the, the Town of Parenton could be asked to take a second look, um, rather than just categorically stating it's not their problem, I think that might be useful, um, for the Eilich's if, if, if nobody else. Just an observation.
Okay.
And a related comment, I guess, to that. I, I think maybe in our former conversations on this, um, we mentioned the, the objectivity that the, um, town engineer representative could bring sending... We, we, we spoke about using the town engineer to go out there and, and give an assessment as well. I think that'd be very helpful to the board.
Wes, comments?
So, I do have several comments on the project overall. And, uh, my, my colleague Dustin Bradley wasn't able to make it tonight. He's one of the certi- certified floodplain managers, uh, that he has been here before for other projects, uh, but he's, he's ill. But he did give me a little bit of guidance, uh, specific to the wetlands, uh, on the project site. And I know we, we haven't quite gotten there yet. But this is, this is a fairly complex project, given, um, you know, some of the hoops that they have to jump through. So, um, one of the things that, that our stormwater engineer was looking at is the infiltration testing that was being used for, um, kind of the infiltration practices that are proposed, right? And what I understand from, from her is that, uh, the, the design engineer has used the sanitary sewer perk test results to help demonstrate that the infiltration practices would work. But I guess that's, uh, not in conformance with what the design manual would require. And, and she's looking for actual infiltration testing to satisfy, I believe it was Appendix D. So, that's, that's, that's one element that, uh, I think we feel still needs to be addressed. One of the other elements is that the project is, uh, would be categorized as a realty subdivision under New York State Department of Health, uh, right? It, that seems to meet the 5-5-3 rule, five lots, five acres or less in any three, three-year period of time. And, uh, for that, the, the Department of Health would need to review, uh, the project and, and also the set. Our understanding is that they would review the septics. I know we provided some comments on the septic systems, but, um, I don't know if you've made that submission for them to review the septic systems already, but I, it would be difficult for this planning board, I think, to make a determination of significance under SEACER without having, uh, the septic reviewed and, and addressed by Department of Health. So, the other issue, one other issue that we know about is the, is the wetland. So, and there is, there has been a delineation, and that's been helpful. The applicant has provided that delineation. Uh, we also understand that, uh, New York State DEC, uh, there are some changes to the wetland regulations that become effective January 1st. And, uh, they are effective for projects that don't have their, uh, negative declaration under SEACER by January 1st. So, we've been instructed, I guess, by DEC to submit any site to, for them to review, uh, for their jurisdiction. And, and what we understand is that the applicant would need to submit their, uh, wetland delineation for DEC, to DEC for review. So, there's, there's, uh, several items that, that are really going to seem to require a, a bit more attention from the applicant. We are working on an updated comment letter. A number of comments that we initially had have been addressed, but, uh, we feel that there's probably a bit more to, to address going forward.
This evening's discussion and action is basically to declare the planning board's intent to be lead agency, correct? So...
Yeah. So, in, on the planning board's desk tonight, you do have a draft resolution to initiate the lead agency coordination process that's required for, uh, type one actions under SEACER, right?
Um, it is a public hearing. Um, at least one resident is here that might like to say something. So, um, I'll open up the floor for any comments as we continue on evaluating this application.
Good evening. I'm Deborah Eilich. My husband, Peter. And, uh, so we're the Eilich's that everybody's talking about. And I do have a few comments to make. I think the major issue that, that I want to talk about has enough, is, is exactly what we talked about last time. Okay? So, it's, it's the drainage. Um, I have a couple of notes here, so bear with me. Any changes in the concept drawing wouldn't change those issues. So, you know, regardless of what direction they decide to go in with driveways, that doesn't change anything with the drainage. It was brought up just, just a minute ago that, uh, some pictures were, uh, given to the board. Scott, you had a couple of pictures there that I had sent. Um, I also have, as I've told you...
Did you send this? Did you send this one?
Yeah. That's our driveway that was destroyed by the last flood. Um, so, just, just as a, as a comment is that the water does flow from the south to the northeast. It does not flow from, from Monroe County. And I have multiple, um, videos and photos that actually show the direction that the water is moving in. And sometimes it is significant. The last rain we had a couple of weeks ago, uh, was not enough to, to, you know, have a flood, but we have had many, many times. And the, the one, 100-year rule, and I mentioned this last week or last time, the, the 100-year rule, we've had multiple floods, big ones, you know, in the 45 years that we've been there. So, it, it's not just a 100-year flood. So, I just want to make sure that you understand, and if they try to put in larger pipes, as I think Keith Maynard said in the last meeting, all that's going to do is make the water flow faster onto our property. Um, there, there are, and in the swale that goes up along our driveway, there are trees all the way along, but there are no trees in the swale. The pipe is not, you know, and you guys are welcome to go out there and take a look or send your engineer a look. The pipes are not, uh, clogged. Uh, and at times, those swales, they go, they, they might be three or four feet deep, and they go up above that level and flood our driveway. And as, as Mr. Santoro mentioned, um, there's a picture there of the last time that we had a, a major flood a few years ago. It actually took out a portion of our driveway. Um, the fire hydrant that they mentioned that's to the north is directly in front of our house, which would require taking out part of our driveway. And there's also multiple swales. So, I don't even know how you'd get water from that fire hydrant. It's kind of a dead end at our property. I guess the bottom line is if, if this is approved and damage occurs again, that's, in my opinion, the planning board's responsibility, the town's responsibility, and the contractor or builder and owner of the property's responsibility. I mean, we've had enough damage over the years that, you know, we're just looking for some help here so that we don't have more damage in the future. You know, we're getting older and, um, it, you know, it's, it's hard to fix this stuff. Um, I guess, I guess that's about it. Just wanted to have my say, and, um, if you have any questions, I'm also more than happy to provide you with any of those videos that show, you know, the flooding, the pictures of, of our, of our driveway and our backyard, um, when it floods.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mrs. Eilich. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I hope I didn't take up more than I was supposed to, like I did last time.
Thank you. Right.
David Wright, 33 Ketchum Street. I'm here representing Victor Hiking Trails. Uh, at our last meeting on this, uh, I requested that, uh, the developer consider a future trail easement, or a town, a town trail easement along this property line and then coming south down to this property line. The benefit of that would be, would hook up with a trail easement that is already, uh, across County Road Nine. And, uh, if we were successful in getting connections all the way to Mary Frances Bluebird Haven, uh, that would make an ideal loop, uh, in that area for the, for residents and anyone else that would be interested in hiking that. So, I'm asking the planning board and the developer and the landowner to consider a future trail. It's not something that we would put in right away because it wouldn't connect right away, but it's something that, as we start, start to put the pieces together, we can make all the connections, uh, to make that a, a loop.
That coming from Collier Crossing, that, is that coming from Collier Crossing? That, other, other easements?
The easements are, they're already in the books there. That's from, uh, Falcons Nest.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see it off. Okay, a little further north.
Yeah, we haven't put that in yet. We had a scout who was interested in doing that because he lived in that neighborhood. And, uh, the more he got into it, the more he decided it was going to be too big of a project for him, so...
Be a big project.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So, um, but that would be the reason, so, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Comments from the public? Do we leave this open or...
Yeah, we'd leave it.
Because we're still going through the review. So, okay, well, our only action tonight, as I indicated, was that, um, we have a draft SEACER lead agency coordination resolution. And, uh, this will get things moving on the, uh, application, so, you guys are okay? I can read that. Um, so, this is a resolution, Nikolov subdivision, Blazey Road, application 5PS24. Whereas September 17th, 2024, Town of Victor received a subdivision application from Land Tech Surveying and Planning on behalf of Keith Nikolov, requesting a subdivide 42.4 acre parcel into eight residential building lots located with, between County Route Nine and Blazey Road. Uh, and whereas the Town of Victor Planning Board has preliminarily classified the projects as type one action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act pursuant to the following sections of SEACER's implementing regulations. And they're listed. Uh, whereas the project would disturb nine acres of land exceeding a 2.5 acre disturbance threshold created due to the project site being located within and, and adjacent to an agricultural district. And whereas the New York State Department of Health considers realty subdivisions to be a type one action, to be type one actions, and a realty subdivision is defined as the sale, rental, or offer for sale or lease of any tract land under one ownership or common scheme which has been subdivided into five or more residential lots designated by meets and bounds, each compromising a five, comprising of five acres or less within any three-year period. And whereas the planning board has preliminarily identified that the New York State Department of Health, Monroe County Water Authority, Ontario County Planning Board are involved agencies as defined in Section 617-2 of SEACER regulations, and the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation is an interested agency. And whereas the Town of Victor Planning Board intends to proceed with a coordinated review as required for type one actions, and a lead agency must be established prior to making a determination of significance, now therefore be resolved that the Town of Victor Planning Board hereby declares its intent to act as lead agency and directs the Planning Board Secretary to mail the long form EAF Part One, completed by the project sponsor, and a copy of the subdivision application to all involved and interested agencies, notifying them that a lead agency must be agreed upon within 30 calendar days of the date that the environmental assessment form was mailed, uh, to them, expressing the Town Planning Board's intent to act as lead agency. So, uh, on this resolution to declare the Town Planning Board as lead, lead agency, do I hear a motion for approval?
I move.
Al moves?
Second.
At seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Area 5-0.
Just to follow up on one of the project sponsors' questions on how to, how to request, I guess, a waiver from the planning board for the driveways. I would, I would suggest just putting together a brief letter, right? Maybe it's just a letter to the, to the planning board or, uh, the planning and building office requesting that you're, you're looking for that waiver to the particular design and construction sta- section of the design and construction standards, and that would do it.
If, if they're coming in for a cluster subdivision, if, excuse me, if they're coming in for a cluster subdivision and they demonstrated that a concept plan would generate 17 lots versus what they're currently proposing, uh, under the cluster provisions, can't we just handle it that way? In other words, is, isn't it enabled by virtue of being a clustered subdivision?
I think you still need a waiver for...
I'll have to check on that. That's, that's an interesting question. Yeah, that's an interesting question. Let's double-check on that.
Someone hadn't asked before, so that's good.
Could be.
Because a clustered subdivision allows us to manipulate the dimensions to a more environmentally responsible or...
Yeah, it does.
Layout.
That's right.
So, that would include dimensions that affect driveways.
It does, yeah.
All right.
The thought.
Throwing that out there.
All right. Scott? Okay. Item seven this evening, Stone Brook subdivision. This is not a public hearing. The applicant is requesting to, approval to create a clustered subdivision of 44 buildable lots on 100 acres in the Town of Victor with 15-plus acres in the Town of Farmington for a total of 115 acres. This would be Section One of a two-phase development. Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, members of the board. Uh, my name is Cole Peppersergi. I'm with Marathon Engineering. With me today is Jeff Smith and Tim Smith, uh, with Woodstone Custom Homes. Here today to talk about the Stone Brook subdivision, um, requesting final approval for Section One. The overall subdivision being 85 lots and Section One being 44 of that overall total. Just real quickly, it's located on the east side of Victor Road, um, just above Auburn I gave this presentation, uh, a month ago, so I won't go into the, uh, nitty details. Uh, I'll just provide an update for the board. Uh, we've addressed the comments that we've been provided, and we should have a response to comments letter and revised plans for that. Some of the bigger comments that we addressed were relocating that crosswalk over to the intersection at, uh, Sun Ray Crest, um, and, uh, petitioning to the town board to be in the, uh, town's drainage improvement area, and, um, clarifying some of the conservation areas and easements on the plans to make sure that was clear. With that, I think I'll open it up to any questions or comments?
Um, we have several issues to discuss this evening, but, um, I'll open it up for questions. Joe?
I have nothing.
Okay. Al?
No.
Okay. Scott?
I don't think I have anything. I believe we had a good discussion last time, was very thorough.
Okay.
I agree.
Bernie? Okay. There you go. Um, yeah, we do have a draft resolution, but there's some, uh, items in here, I think that Wes had wanted to discuss before we got into this, or at least as guidance.
So, uh, we did, we did have a previous comment letter on this, on this project. We are in the process of updating it. Many, many of our comments have been addressed and we're, we're satisfied, so I don't see any problem.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if the, at least on Lobello's behalf, like, I don't see anything that, in showstoppers. Uh, we did draft a resolution for the planning board to consider tonight. Uh, it provides a little bit of language on the, on the history of the project. It provides a little bit of language on the history of the project and including the Planning Board's review of the preliminary overall subdivision, right? So Section 1, obviously, is just about half of the project area. And it also describes that the applicant's intent for satisfying the 50% open space requirement for the major subdivisions in the town is by transfer of ownership of approximately 50 acres that are within the Town of Victor to the Genesee Land Trust, so as to preserve the natural habitat of the Mud Creek Riparian Corridor, floodplain, protection of aquatic habitats, and water quality within Mud Creek. And also to provide public access from the Auburn Trail. So there's an addition, in addition, outside of the Town of Victor, there is another 15 acres that is in the Town of Farmington, which is not taken into the calculation for the 50% open space requirement because that's a different town. So we'll let the developer worry about that with Farmington, about how that gets addressed. But, so that's how the 50% open space requirement is intended to be addressed here. There is a condition that we've drafted towards the end of the resolution. It's number six. It's an ongoing condition that it states, "Should the 50 acres of land that is to be transferred to the Genesee Land Trust not occur, the applicant shall return to the Planning Board with a revised final subdivision plan so as to revisit the disposition of the required 50% open space." It's just kind of there as a safe hold. And then also, I should mention that there's a provision in here that allows for setback measurements. And this is not, this is similar to what was done in a project previously reviewed and approved by the Planning Board, Willis Hill Estates Phase 3, I believe it was, allows setback measurements of the primary building on each lot are to be measured to the closest point in the building foundation, right? So that's in here as.
Not the roof overhangs, I mean, that was the discussion.
Yeah, yep. So those are just some of the tidbits that I wanted to call out in this draft resolution. And that's all I have for you right at this point.
Anything for Wes, Board? All right, well, like everybody's indicated, we've seen this as a full concept and then we've discussed this particular phase of it prior to this meeting. So I will read the resolution and we can move forward with that if you guys are okay with it. So for the Stone Brook preliminary subdivision, East Victor Road, Application 3 FS 24. Whereas on or about October 8th, 2024, the Town of Victor received a final subdivision application from Marathon Engineering on behalf of Woodstone Custom Homes, the applicant for Section 1 of the Stone Brook subdivision to subdivide 44 residential building lots on the east side of East Victor Road and at the terminus of Sunray Crest Drive, tax map number 284262,000. And within the town's Residential 2 zoning district and within the Residential C overlay district. And whereas the Town of Victor Planning Board previously reviewed the preliminary overall cluster subdivision, Town Project Number 2 PS 22, that proposed 85 single-family residences on the east side of East Victor Road and at the terminus of Sunray Crest Drive, and proposed to utilize the Town of Victor's clustered subdivision provisions. There's a lot of legalese here, but I will skim them. There's a lot. Whereas the Town of Victor Planning Board previously classified the project as Type 1 action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. And whereas the applicant's intent for satisfying the 50% open space requirements for major subdivisions required pursuant to Section 21146A of the Victor Town Code by transferring ownership of approximately 50 acres within the Town of Victor portion of the project site to the Genesee Land Trust so as to preserve the natural habitat of Mud Creek Riparian Corridor, floodplain, protection of aquatic habitats, and water quality in Mud Creek, and to provide public access from the Auburn Trail. And whereas the Planning Board finds that the proposed method of satisfying the 50% open space requirements to be appropriate. And whereas the Planning Board makes the following additional findings, and there are 12 of them, now therefore be resolved that the setback measurements of the preliminary buildings, each lot are to be measured to the closest point in the building foundation. And be it further that I resolve that the Section 1 final subdivision application of Jeff Smith, Woodstone Custom Homes, 15 Fishers Road, Suite 202 Pittsburgh, New York, major subdivision entitled Stone Brook subdivision, be approved with the following conditions. Conditions that must be met prior to chairman signing the preliminary subdivision plan. Number 1, 2, and our standard, number 3, that the comments in a letter dated November 12th, 2024 from Lobella Associates be addressed. Number 4, that the comments from the Town of Farmington Water and Sewer Department dated October 30th, 2024 be addressed. And conditions that are ongoing, standard conditions that must be adhered to, that Wes referred to earlier. Number 1 is standard, 2, 3, 4, and 5 are all standard. And number 6, as Wes indicated, should the 50 acres of land that is to be transferred to the Genesee Land Trust not occur, the applicant shall return to the Planning Board with a revised final subdivision plan so as to revisit the disposition of the required 50% open space. And be it further resolved that the Planning Board Secretary distribute the Planning Board's approval letter. And as I indicated, there is a copy of this on the back table if anybody really wants to read every word that I didn't read. So with that, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I'll move it.
Scott moves.
I agree.
Ernie, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Carried 5-0, so.
Thank you, and have a good night.
You too. Thank you. Okay, number 8, Aldrich Road subdivision. This is not a public hearing.
You said, "Thank you for your time."
Happy New Year and Merry Christmas. Aldrich Road subdivision, Zoned Residential 2C, owner DeHaaland Design Inc., applicant is requesting acknowledgement of a complete application to develop a five-lot duplex subdivision on 10.29 acres parcel. This is the first step of a major subdivision and only acknowledgement of a completed application will be considered at this meeting. Good evening.
Good evening, Nick Reziosi, I'm the applicant, and with me is Greg McMahon from McMahon LaRue Associates. And Greg, you want to come up and just talk about the overall concept?
Good evening, Greg McMahon, McMahon LaRue. At our last appearance before the board, we presented a couple concepts. We're proposing five lots with a duplex on each lot. The concepts included the utilization of an existing private drive with the entrance being north of Duck Hollow Road. Or what is our preferred option is a new entrance directly opposite Duck Hollow. There was discussion on many items at that meeting, but I think at the conclusion, the town wanted to do a site visit. So that was scheduled. I wasn't in attendance for that, but Nick was there, and I believe Wes was at that meeting. And I can let Nick summarize that, but again, we're looking for any additional input and the ability to move on now to a preliminary.
Yeah, so we met with Wes and a couple members of the Conservation Board. We walked the whole site where the buildings would be and right along the wetland delineation. And we had a little discussion on the northwest corner of the furthest duplex about how close it was to the wetland. And during the discussion, I told them we could put in a barrier there to prevent people from entering the wetlands, so there's no encroachment onto that area. And the other comment that the Conservation Board mentioned was instead of putting the conservation markers where the conservation is, because the wetland is more, is closer to the building than the conservation location that we would mark along the wetland location. Wes, is there anything else that we talked about that I missed?
Seems like it was so long ago. Don't, I can't remember anything else. I don't recall anything further than what you've just described.
Yeah. Generally, the discussion with the Conservation Board and with Wes was that the hill is, starts at the top of County Road Nine and just slopes away, so none of these buildings would be directly in the wetland. They'd all be back. And there's quite a bit of room between the end of the building and the wetland.
When you say quite a bit of room, how much do you call quite a bit of a room? Because I see one that's like literally right at the corner.
Yeah, the ones I mentioned quite a bit are the ones further to the south. The one to the north is obviously pretty close. And like I said, we commit to putting a barrier there to prevent any encroachment.
One of the challenges that I've had with this application is that it's counter to what we have seen in the original approvals on multiple phases of the Aldrich Road subdivision that Scott DeHaaland had reviewed with us. And the fact of the matter is that when we approved that subdivision clustered and orientation, he had to show what possible layout could be if you had everyone with 100-foot road frontage on all their buildings. And I, bringing up that plan that we looked, we reviewed at that time in order to approve the clustered subdivision that was done. And so in order to approve that, unless this image will come up, we, Scott showed the 100-foot frontages as looping around each of these potential lots. And then in order to make that fit, he had three houses as an approved layout, or not approved, but as a suggested or proposed layout, in order to justify then taking all of this and creating a cluster down here with the driveway. So how can we in good conscience accept what you're now showing as 10 units on property that this, it was only originally intended in order to get this approved with three units, not 10?
Unfortunately, I wasn't a part of that.
I understand that.
So I don't really know how.
But that's the, that's the yoke you will have to bear in making an application for the balance of the parcel that is now, you know, up for discussion.
Okay.
So I can't see anything as a complete sketch application that doesn't involve three buildings here. And because the 10 just isn't doable, you know, five buildings, duplexes, I can't see it.
Is it a code issue? Because when I read through the code, this meets all the code requirements as it is.
What do you mean meets all that? How does that possible?
When you read through the code, it's 100-foot lots, so each lot has 100-foot frontage on County Road Nine. And for the density, it is one unit per acre, and that there's 10 acres, so there's one unit per acre, so 10 units.
Where's that 10 acres?
Is this an approved plan?
This is the plan that was used to justify approving the concept. Yeah, so you're double dipping, if there's any better word, I'd be glad to hear it. But in terms of getting this, you know, 10 units on a small parcel approved, especially running right up to the wetlands, which I can't get my hands around, you know, basically using one to justify the other and vice versa. You know, you're circular reasing almost, I don't know, I'm trying to think of the right phrase. But I know, I'd be glad to hear the thoughts of any of the other board members, but this is the biggest problem I have with this.
Do you have any thoughts?
So I can't see even approving a sketch plan that doesn't back and say, "All right, we want to finish this development." Still Scott DeHaaland's, right? His name's on it, so it doesn't approve.
I'm in the process of purchasing it, so it'll be my piece.
Okay, but this was his concept for the entire parcel. And in order to justify doing all of this work over here, he showed the possibility of three more units here, and that's it. And we agreed with that, saying, "All right, in the future, we might see three more houses." Not 10, or even five duplexes as you're proposing. And it's totally different than what Mauro Palladori has for this parcel here. These three would be consistent with these single-family homes, but they certainly aren't consistent with the density layout and the possibility of 100-foot frontage and all of that with this being used as a layout to approve this. That's where I am with it. So I'll let the rest of the board chime in on it. Al?
I tend to agree. I mean, we spent many, many meetings over an extended period of time to land on this concept.
Yeah.
So to kind of discard that now to say, "Well, we can do something else with that remaining parcel," I think would be counter to the original intent.
Okay. Any other comments or thoughts on it? Wetlands or proximity or anything?
No, I mean, I pretty much echo your comments. I mean, you know, irrespective of whether, you know, if we had originally showed, you know, duplexes or 10 units in there, right, the wetlands, you know, still, it's a tight fit for that property.
Okay. And Joe?
So the duplexes are the issue if it was just five homes there?
If it was three homes and there was enough room to put these homes with the wetlands, because he didn't even have those delineated at this time, I don't believe.
Okay.
Like, because he hadn't planned on situating three homes here. I'm sure he knew about where the wetlands were to even show this as a possibility.
Okay, then I'm bored with your thoughts.
Okay.
I want to make sure I got it.
I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but I.
No, I wanted to make sure I understood completely what we were talking, so.
Okay. Scott?
Yeah, I think it comes down to what was promised, if you will, at the onset. And I think the town went through, I was part of some of the approvals of the other portions, but, and I remember glancing at this, and this was a future item that just wasn't in the mix at the time. But I think if that's what was represented and that's what went through Seeker, as we discussed before, then that's what we've obligated the town to. And that's what the developer agreed to.
Yeah.
It's my recollection as well. I went on the same time that you were.
Yeah.
Could I? Just ask, was, this was a concept, was this, was secret, was done on a final or was secret done on a preliminary overall?
Secret was done on the impacts of the application. And the layout was developed, first of all, part of the secret process. And secondly, what were the impacts on this overall parcel to putting these homes out here? And, yeah, the impacts to the wetlands, I mean, these are isolate, these are, how to say, remote, more remote from the homes, they're not really disturbed by the homes that are out there. But it was used as land to justify putting them all over here so that you could increase the, we'll call it the density in a part of the land that then would not impact the wetlands that are out there.
And again, I don't have any background on this, but typically, if there's a preliminary overall that's approved, and any final plans would have to conform to that, or you would have to amend your preliminary overall. So if there was a preliminary overall approval and those were three single-family lots, I understand where the board's coming from. But if it were just a concept plan.
Well, you can have a million concept plans and not act on it. You can have a concept plan that uses this property to justify this. And then this, he did show this as a future potential housing, you know, additional subdivision. And that would be feasible with all of these other lots, given the more conventional 100-foot layout, 100-foot road frontage. given the more conventional 100-foot layout, 100-foot road frontage for all those buildings.
So, if we came back with a concept that 100-foot lots and they were all single-family on County Road 9 outside the wetland, you would be okay with that since it's the 100-foot?
If you had three houses like that and you could keep them out of the wetlands and put an appropriate subdivision, you know, layout in there. And then, the other issue is access to County Route 9. And I believe Mr. Palladore has the right to access using that parcel.
He's got the right to access, but he... We have the right to use it as well. So, whatever we put in, he has the right to use. But he can't restrict us from using it.
Okay. That was a question that I had in our staff meeting a couple of weeks ago. And so, you're saying, I mean, he still has to be able to access his lots through whatever goes on in front of these particular homes there?
Yeah, which we had proposed in all of our concepts. So, we're not denying him any access. He would have access to it.
Okay. But he also has to accept what you're doing to...
He doesn't have to accept it because as long as he's provided access, whether it's through Concept A or Concept B or an alternate option, he just has to be provided access.
Okay. So, you're saying you have access, which is fine, as long as Mr. Palladore can get his access to his homes with an acceptable layout for the fire department too, because that's another issue that I'm sure has been discussed.
Yeah, we talked about that. And in Concept A, where we moved the access point across from Duck Hollow, we would propose if we were to have five lots or five buildings, we would put a private road, which waives the three-lot maximum on a dead-end private drive. Those are things we have considered.
Are you looking at something, Wes?
Yeah, I was just... I guess I was just looking at the easements that... Or the easement that was provided to Mr. Palladore from, was it Victor Community Church, maybe?
I think so.
Yeah. And I think what the project sponsor is indicating is correct, isn't that? Mr. Palladore's easement doesn't preclude the ability for the potential developer to, you know, have ingress and egress as well to the site, provided that they're not, you know, blocking... Blocking Mr. Palladore's opportunity to have access to his own site, so.
So, you have the access. It'll have to be coordinated with Palladore's entrance and geometry suitable to the fire department for access. But I can't see this application for this even sketch plan approval moving forward because it's well beyond what was originally conceived for this lot to justify all of these buildings. So...
Okay.
I mean, we can vote on it and deny it. And then, you're kind of up the creek or you could come back with something else.
We'll come back. We'll talk about it and we'll come back next month or the month after.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Palladore, not a public hearing, but come on up. You're the adjacent most affected owner.
That easement, I talked to my attorney about that. And have you showed it to your attorney?
So, I haven't... I haven't had an opportunity to converse with the town's attorney on the easement, no.
If you could, please just show it to him. I have him, you know, review and see who has the right.
Yeah, that certainly... That review would certainly happen.
Yeah. Okay, just because he says that there is a right.
We're really happy to get that done.
Okay. And number two, you know, we got a waiver to put the five homes. This is an existing home. So, I don't know how those three homes can get connected to what I have.
Yeah.
Those are just by two points to make sure.
Yeah, and you also have a very unusual... I don't want to call it alignment, but road profile, whatever.
That's... Yeah, that's why that easement goes north to south from Aldridge all the way to the thruway, so.
But your driveway is much higher than County Route 9.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's why it's...
Got to go all the way up in order to get on.
That's why it's pushed all the way down that, in front of those three houses, actually.
I wasn't sure what that... If that was what you were talking about or just, you know, the reason why it was that far?
It would, yeah.
Yeah.
Like, our entry and exit is probably in the middle of those three houses.
Yeah.
Just because of the contours.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so we can continue on. And with the final discussion is an informal Chick-fil-A restaurant. They've been before us a couple of times already. Had some pretty good conversations last time. And I know you've submitted some additional information and renderings and...
Yes, we have. Good evening. Randy Bevout, Bowler Engineering. With me tonight is Zach Middlebrooks with Chick-fil-A, Eric Wright with Wilmerite, Peter Vars from BME, who's Wilmerite's engineer. And we have Christine Bianchi with TY Lynn, who is the traffic engineer. We brought her just in case the board has any questions. So, I'll just kind of walk through. We're pretty excited about the changes that we made. You know, the board pushed us a little bit. And we think we've provided a very good product in return. It seems to be shaping up very nicely, we think. So, I'll kind of just... If I can kind of just walk through the site plan changes. So, we reconfigured, starting in the drive-through lane. I don't remember who it was that suggested it. Maybe it was Mr. Lindbeck about sort of angling the...
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, I can...
You got a laser.
I got a laser.
As long as you don't...
Got to point it the right way, though. Yeah, so we angled this portion of the drive-through lane there, which ended up adding about 30 feet from where it was originally to where that straight tangent point is, is about 30 feet of additional green space on the frontage side, taken away from the interior side. And then, probably the biggest change we made was the modifying the access drives. As you recall, we had three access drives there. We've eliminated that. We've eliminated one and put that to two. And the distance, this... When we had the three access drives, this was 47 feet to that access drive. Now, we're about 104 feet. But it'll make that left-turn lane stacking work a lot better. Obviously, reduce the number of conflict points. And just the configuration in the parking lot, what we've done is build in some, I'll say, additional capacity to the drive-through while still allowing a free flow into the parking lot. And with both of these changes, we didn't change the amount of drive-through stacking that we have from the original plan to this plan. We still have about 30 cars stacking within the actual drive-through lane. And, you know, conservatively, we have another six vehicles, you know, from the drive-through lane back to not even the ring road, a little further into the site where the two lanes kind of start. And the change in the parking, we ended up reducing parking by one space with these changes. So, we're now at 60 versus 61. And that's... And then, just the result of those changes decreased the impervious area by about 2,165 square feet. So, you know, lessen the impact slightly on the green space. And then, if we can go to the architectural elevation.
Nope, go backward, right there.
Yeah, so, you recall the modified design from the... We originally submitted the proto-building. We came back with a modified design that had some gabled aspects, features to the roof. And what we've done here is provided a full gable roof on both the north and south ends of the building. And then, we've wrapped those facades on both ends with the culture stone that matches the... Some of the other areas of the building. And we think, you know, so looking at these views from the... This is the view on the north side. This is the view on the south side. We're pretty pleased with how this came out and how the architects modified this. We think it's a really nice look. And then, you know, the center part is consistent with what we had before. It provides an area for an appropriate parapet wall to screen the rooftop equipment. And then, I'm just... From the board's comments from the last time, so I just talked about the architecture landscaping. We've upgraded the caliper of the trees to three, to three and a half inches. We think that's reasonable and we can get that size versus, you know, specking something that we're not sure we're going to actually be able to get. And then, with the changes, we've added some additional evergreens plantings in that angled part of the... Where we pulled the drive-through lane back. And then, we've also identified four trees, existing trees to remain. And that, those four existing trees, one is here. And then, there's three... This is a deciduous tree here that we would keep. And then, there's three evergreens here on the backside that we would propose to keep. We looked at other places, but just the, you know, along this frontage, it's just really challenging because of the grade and the change in the grade and trying to keep some of those trees. And not all those trees are necessarily in the greatest condition. But we think the ones we're proposing, you know, we can do successfully. And anything else was going to be a real challenge. Traffic, so we've talked about reducing the number of driveways into Chick-fil-A. We've eliminated the four-way stop that I know was a concern of the board. And just a little background to that, and I might have mentioned this last time, the reason that we had proposed that was really to maintain the same level of service for the left-turn movement coming into that access road. But we understand the concern and, you know, it'll work really either way. And then, we did not get it into the submission. But the day after the submission, I thought I had it sitting here, we did receive a letter from New York State DOT. They agreed with the traffic study. They noted that there is no impacts of this project to the corridor. We had noted a timing change of two seconds on 96. And they basically said, "Yeah, you don't even need to do that because of the way the system works. It inherently is intelligent and will adapt it." And, you know, they noted that they'll obviously further modify, you know, assess this once, if this is constructed and once it's open. And then, the last two items that were discussed with the board is the no-build area. And we're just... We're here informally. We're acknowledging that we have to address that with a formal submission and that, you know, we would proceed with that request with really the same ideas as the prior request and focusing on the, you know, enhanced green space and landscaped areas consistent with the prior modifications. And then, the last item was the request to look at shifting this to the north, shifting the ring road to the north. We did look at this. And we figured if we were to shift this ring road up, it would have to be right here. And the reason we think it would have to be right here is the distance between what would be these two intersections. So, shifting that ring road up, we're going to add an intersection, which would be a three-legged intersection. And that would come down from this middle entrance. This, I guess ideally, would become a... Would become a three-way intersection. So, now, we've... What currently we have today is four legs of an intersection is going to turn into two three-legged intersections. So, we're adding additional conflict points. And then, the problem we see is this ring road, if you bring this down here, it really doesn't bring anybody anywhere. They're kind of stuck in the middle. It's kind of no man's land versus, you know, the way this is designed, it makes sense. It brings people to these stores over here. It brings them to this point. And then, just the impact of the loss of parking. If this ring road was shifted to here, we estimated we'd lose about 127 parking spaces, which is pretty significant in the big picture of things. And, you know, I think we've noted, we're proposing 60 parking spaces. The code tells us that we need 134. So, we're... We will be asking for a variance as part of this. So, if you kind of collectively put them two together, you know, that number is pretty significant. And really, our goal tonight would be hopefully to get acceptance from the board on this plan, on the site plan and the changes that we've made so that we could move this forward formally. Our understanding is if we are to move this forward formally, that our first step would be going to the zoning board and seeking the variances. And then, we would come back to this board. With that, I can answer any questions that the board may have.
Where to start? I... Okay, we'll start positive. I really like the architecture that you guys revised. It looks like several, a series of buildings together now that function as a series, you know, like true gables and peak lines, ridge lines and the materials. And the look itself is much smaller of an impact in terms of that big billboard that you had before with one tall parapet than now with the two ends bookending the center. So, kudos to the architects that worked on that, from my opinion. I'm still concerned about the loss of, you know, green space right here. I know that you gained some with this corner. And I did ask to see if you could shift it, shift the building and everything. And I actually put something together myself to see what that might look like. So, I don't know, Wes, can you bring that up on your screen, the PDF? So, it's a little crude since I'm not a graphics expert.
I'll describe what's on my screen first.
Yeah, that's... Sure.
And then, we'll get to yours.
Go for it.
So... So, I did... I took the liberty of doing an overlay. And it's kind of difficult to see. It's kind of difficult to read because you got a lot of different colors on there, okay? So, anything that you... The red line work that you're seeing, that was the... I'll call it the November iteration, right? And the most recent iteration is what you see in the green line work. And the red and green cancel each other out and make black in other areas. So, this kind of illustrates, right? In this corner, you can see, right, where they've gained some green space as a result of that project, that design change. There's also...
Here goes one of your blue...
All right, I'm okay.
So, here's the other area where they're gaining green space is right out, right in here. That red line work is now part of the old, the previous design compared to the extent now, which is the green. So, those are probably the two big areas that I see that have changed. Now, we'll get to Joe's request here. So, you've got a couple of different slides you wanted me to bring up?
Yeah, so this is what's there today, right? So, you have the access drive coming down to this intersection. And then, the... I can't really call it... I guess it's a ring road, a part of it. It comes here and then it's opposite where Goodwill is, right on this corner. A lot of nice green space. And that was... That's the focus of what we're talking about. So, if you want to go to the next one, Wes? So, the proposal is to, as Wes just outlined with the latest layout, is, you know, giving a little more green space on this side and this one here. But my request was, can we shift this whole facility over basically one parking bay? And so, I did that and eliminated basically 43 parking spaces by shifting the entire facility over this way. Keeping... Now, you've got an offset intersection here. But it still does not interfere with the access, exit, entrance area here. And I guess this is... And I guess this is, to me, something that could at least be considered because you get a lot more green space along this driveway shielding or sheltering, if you will, the overall facility that you're putting in. And you're not losing a ton of parking spaces on this stretch. Now admittedly, this area here will have to get looked at so that you can get some more traffic circulation, but I would not necessarily say it's a good idea to start having more access into each of these lanes off of this ring road. And actually, what I'm thinking is maybe if you take this driveway and make this the new intersection down this lane and eliminate this ring road altogether, you could orient the building differently. You could have a lot of parking in this zone here and still get a lot more green space. So, if you flip back and forth between the two, you can clearly see the difference in green space at the lower part of the site. And you're, here's this one stretch of spaces that you'd eliminate. Admittedly, this was crude because I took your image and put it on...
Yeah, no, I understand. I mean, and again, what jumps off the page for us as engineers is that offset intersection. It's not, in no means is that ideal. I mean, generally speaking, if you're designing intersections, and that's, that's why we picked the, the third row up, is you would really want 150 feet between them. So if you go two rows up, you're, you're only, like center to center, you're only, I forget the number, but it's roughly about 120.
That's where you mean it, two rows up, can you?
Meaning if you went to the second driveline up.
Up here? Or no?
Yeah, go there. So, yeah, if you went right there, even that is not enough. If you think about somebody coming in and just, you know, the stop and starting.
Well, I'm, I'm moving this from here to here.
No, I understand that.
Right, okay.
Yeah, but just the offset of that and the, you know, the, the opposing left turn movements, we would see that as very problematic.
So, if you eliminate this altogether, and this is a field of parking, and this is the road now down to this intersection, how would you look at that? And I'm not talking about one, two, three, you know, like offsets and everything else. I'm talking about this is your new access to this access drive and then this is gone.
Yeah, so if you, if you brought that straight in, I mean, actually, I mean, just because of the alignment of that, it's, it's going to have a little bit of a bigger impact on the parking count. But now, when you bring that straight in, now you're, now you're close to the intersection on the south side of that building.
Right here, at Macy's?
Yeah, so, I mean, that's why we looked at the, the third row up, sort of, not exactly, but would, would put you, you know, would put you in the center.
Oh, this one? At the third row?
But you're saying, get rid of the ring road, like if you move the ring road...
Get rid of this road right here altogether and...
Then how are you...
You'd have to reorient the building, obviously. You can't just take this and move it, even though that's what I did as an illustration. It's something that you might enter Chick-fil-A here and go around the building and then come out up in this stretch here, but then this is a field of parking. I'm speculating because I'm not doing all the engineering on it. I'm just trying to see, is there a out-of-the-box way of looking at it that might be more...
I mean, I think from a traffic standpoint, it makes sense for Chick-fil-A to be accessing off the main ring road versus into a parking aisle or, you know, something else.
Right, and, yeah, and I, that would be the, an engineering issue. Right now, you got these two entrances and this is four lanes right here. And these four people that are parking right there can barely get out. If this backs up at all, like it does in Henrietta...
Yeah, and those could be designated potentially as team member parking.
Well, I'm looking at this as team member parking right here.
Well, that too?
I don't see how that...
Yeah, that, that is team member parking. Nobody else can park there.
Right. So, I...
But, I mean, again, that, we have 30 stacks here, which is within the drive-through lane, within the concrete area that we're showing from the pickup point, you know, back to the start of the concrete drive-through lane. It's a pretty healthy stack. And it doesn't have to, I mean, we don't have to provide, you know, make that four lanes wide. We just thought, the idea of the fact that we were able to minimize the number of conflict points, which was a concern of this board...
I agree with that approach.
Well, keeping really the same capacity without impacting, you know, cars parking other than, you know, you referenced the spaces on the left side. Yeah, I mean, I guess what I'm saying is that the frequency of those spaces, you know, I can't stand up here and guarantee anything, but with, with a 30-car stack, I mean, I, you know, maybe at peak hour, might be when there could be conflicts there, but...
That's when you need all your parking, though.
Yeah, most times, yeah, I mean, most times they're not. Yeah, and I, I mean, Peter or Eric can speak, but I, I mean, I, just the, the number of parking spaces, you know, is, is important to the mall. Certainly at certain times of the year, we, they need them.
Yeah, I mean, Macy's actually, I don't know, Wes, are you, did you, are you...
Yeah, I can zoom out. Zoom, yeah.
Zoom out, yeah. Because Macy's line is right down this aisle, right?
That's cor, that's correct.
And then it zigzags around here and cuts across here and down all over the place. So, what I, if you go to the next slide, Wes? So, I haven't touched that aisle with parking and this side of the aisle is general mall parking and this side right here is Macy's lot. So, you'd have to reconfigure something in this area in order to get in and out and around, but you could still retain most of this parking here. Like I said, you're eliminating the one that's underneath now.
Again, when we're talking about, you know, when we looked at it, when we're talking about bringing a ring road down, moving that to the north...
Down here?
Any of the aisles.
Yeah, okay.
That means there's no parking, right? It's a ring road bringing people into the mall. We would not want parking spaces backing out into the ring.
Right, absolutely, yeah. I know what you're saying.
You know, so anything we do is going to impact that number, just bringing the ring road in itself, not even thinking about moving the building to the north or, you know, making other modifications.
So, clearly, this was for me to illustrate my...
Yeah, no, I...
...approach, perspective, however you want to look at it. So, I, I appreciate all your arguments...
Yep.
...on parking and everything else. I was kind of hoping we'd be able to come to something that might...
I mean, I can just tell you, like, just that configuration right there, I will, we will never be able to get our engineer sign off on that intersection design with the offset like that. Just, I mean, we're bearing the liability of that once we put that on that plan and we just think that something to, you know, that kind of configuration is, is problematic.
I mean, in, in that regard, you could probably put a Chick-fil-A right over here and, and add parking in, in this area and still retain tons of green space, but, you know, that would be moving things around quite a bit, so...
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, that, to us, that wouldn't, we actually, I mean, we, we thrown a lot of things around, but then, then you're thinking, thinking about that. Now, you've got people that are parking in that outer lot that have to now walk past Chick-fil-A if they're heading to the, you know, the main mall building. It's just a longer hike for them that...
That's why I would orient all of this parking to this side for Chick-fil-A, which might end up being right here. And then, everything else that's behind Chick-fil-A, you know, is to the mall. So, people wouldn't, people would park in the front of the building and you drive around via the other side, so, trying to isolate it from the opposite direction, so... All right, I think I've probably beat that one up enough, but I just wanted to...
But Joe, just kind of... I mean, I feel like if you can work, you can push that away. We'll need that action to do that. That'd just be from the Macy's side. That is a problematic intersection, even without the Chick-fil-A.
You do need a drive aisle in front of those buildings and then it'd have to go somewhere. And to your point, going through it...
Right out there, though, as you come from there.
True, you could do that as an exit. And they've got a drop-off spot at the end of that building, like an end cap or something, right? I think there's a drop-off thing right there. I could be wrong. On the end? Right here, yeah? Yeah, you're not on the mic, so I'm going to repeat it. He's saying that this is, this is the drop-off right here, Joe? Okay?
Wait a minute. We're headed over there now.
Wes is navigating.
Wes is driving.
There's the overhang.
I didn't know.
It is, because you can see that, that's right there is a drop-off. So, what could you do if you ran this straight down? Or, you talk about leaving this here, you get a four-way intersection, I totally get that, the offsets are not necessarily a, a great thing. And then, if you eliminated that, as Al was me speculating, then where do these cars go that are right here or for the drop-off? Come in here, turn around, go back, and you got to go through a drive aisle to get down to there because this is a separated...
I just don't know how much traffic that Goodwill generates.
True.
Let's, that, work on that intersection for what could be a, compared to the mall. I don't know.
Yeah, no, get it.
It's not a lot. Not that I've observed.
Yeah.
How much leeway has Wilmerite given you in regard to moving it into other parking areas? Where you haven't even discussed it with them.
Well, ask, yeah, right. Ask Mr. Wilmerite.
Yeah, this is Eric Wright with Wilmerite. Yeah, I mean, I think we did explore some of those options and rerouting that ring road and any of the ways that we explored just didn't really work from a traffic flow standpoint. I understand you're saying that intersection right now, coming out of where Goodwill is, doesn't get a lot of traffic. We'd love to have tenants in that area that attract more traffic and, you know, keep, keep bringing people in there with, like Ethan Allen and some of the tenants in the past, there was quite a bit of traffic there and we'd like to see that in the future. So, you know, you can also see that the property lines there...
Yeah.
Where the Macy's property is. So, anytime we're shifting over there, it's, it's getting much more challenging to try and, you know, not encroach on that line, still maintain traffic flows. So, I think from the mall's perspective, we'd have a challenging time finding a solution that really modifies that ring road in a significant way.
Personally, I needed to have this conversation, so I appreciate it.
Yeah.
And, I don't know, I, anybody else from the board have comments on it?
I have a question from the last time we spoke. There was some sort of indication that this area was green space that was intended to remain green space based on prior approvals. I think we had a discussion of that. I just wanted to confirm that was the case.
Yeah, I think you said you were working on that.
That's correct. I mean, we would, we acknowledge that, we would address that with our formal application that, you know, that's something that, you know, the board would have to modify for this to move forward.
And I guess what occurs to me since the very beginning of our discussions is, why do we want to give that up?
The green space?
Yeah, I, I just don't, I just don't get it.
Mr. Vars? Okay, Peter Vars from BME Associates. The gray hair means I have a little bit of knowledge on the history of Eastview Mall, so bear with me as to the, the no-build covenant and the green space. So, when the mall was approved and built in the 70s, the code did not require a green space minimum. It just did not exist in the code. In 1995, the 1995 through 1997 period, that is when Wilmerite went with what we call the back expansion, the Lord &amp; Taylor, J.C. Penney's expansion. When that occurred, the, the code at the time did have the 35% green space requirement. And there was discussion back then. My point being, this isn't the first time green space has been discussed on the mall property. But there was discussion then, did it apply? Should it apply, given, you know, the existence of the mall and whatnot? And it was determined, Wilmerite said, we will set aside 35% green space. So that's when the covenant first got created was to, because the mall at that time well exceeded the 35% minimum. But they basically established an area to say, let's create the 35%. The town had looked at the frontage because there was also the 96-251 corridor overlay was now in place, which did pre, you know, the mall predated that. So that's what occurred. But in that covenant, it's very clearly stated that the planning board has the ability to modify that. It's been modified twice since that, both as it relates to expansions of the mall. The first one was in 1998 and that's when the Power Center, as we call it, Target Home Depot was developed because that is part of the Eastview Mall subdivision, it's lot 12. There was green space that had to be given up in that covenant as it relates to constructing the connector road over. And that was replicated actually with green space in the rear of, of the Target Home Depot store. So, it was kind of just moving green space around. Then, and this is the important part as it relates to where we are today, in 2003, the front-end expansion came before this board, PF Chang's, Champs, all of that. And as you can see on this photo, that, that covenant had to be modified again because of, right where the cursor is, that parking was put in, and we're all familiar with this. Some of us can recall that the, the 96 entrance, what we call the middle entrance, was completely reconfigured to allow that front-end parking expansion. It pushed into that 96 green space. But here's the important part, that there's memos, emails between the town, Wilmerite, and all explained. It was in the fact of, and it gets back to something Wes brought up a few months ago, is that the planning board, the town of Victor at that time, looked at it from a standpoint of quality versus quantity, but not just in green space, but in the mall property itself. The town at the time, and there was, we have documents of meetings with the supervisor, the planning board, the architectural review board, EDR, who was the landscape consultant at the time. It was all about is if Wilmerite is going to be spending a lot of money to enhance the mall, keeping it current, keeping it viable, such that it remains a viable retail commercial property within the town of Victor, that, and in the case of the front-end expansion, it was putting a front door on the mall, that, that was considered to be, for lack of a better way to put it, okay to modify that covenant and give up some of that green space. But, what was part of that though, and this was the role EDR played, was okay, but with the green space that we have in that area remaining was to make, to enhance it. So there was standards, which ironically, Bowlers proposed, I don't know if they knew it or not, but it was with larger diameter trees. It was quality landscaping. Because actually, back in 2003, one of the original proposals was to put green space behind Stickley's and up at the Regal Center because there was room for it. But the plan boards and, at the time said, you know, no, that doesn't really address what we want, which is, you know, that 96 corridor appearance. Point in all of this being is that through the history of Eastview Mall, there's been a balancing act between the green space, but making sure it's quality green space, but also understanding has times changed and economics changed, how important it is to keep the mall viable. Thus, the location, and I would let Chick-fil-A or Bowler speak to why the location is important to them up along the frontage. But at the other, on the other side of it, I think we're being consistent with the fact of the investment that's being put into the property while it may comes, you know, may require the modification of the covenant, but it's something that the town's consistently been willing to consider. And I think, so, the point being is, as, as Randy was saying, which is, you know, the formal application would require a request of the board to modify the covenant, but we would spell all of this out. So, that's kind of the background, but it also brings us to where we are today.
I appreciate the...
Okay.
Appreciate that, yeah.
Anything else, guy?
Um, I guess one of the things that I noticed in what they showed tonight was some improvement to the architecture and sort of emulating something across the street. I guess when I look at this piece of, piece of green space at Eastview Mall, it seems to complement across the street and makes it kind of a nicer area than it would be otherwise. So I think they're headed in the right direction. I, so I think they're headed in the right direction by coming up with some architectural consistency. They would agree with that. I, I think, you know, a building where a, where a sign pokes up out of the ground and entices the driving public to go to a restaurant nearby, I, I just think that's contrary to what we have on the other side of the street.
I'm not following that comment.
Well, what I, what I saw in a, in a prior, uh, display, I think, maybe it was the last time I talked about this, was the, uh, perspective drawing showing the restaurant and its visibility from the state highway. I just thought that clashed very much with what we have across the street. I, I think if, if something could be done that's complimentary, that provides the maximum, you know, ability to maintain, uh, that prime green space, then I think, I think it's worthy of consideration, but this, this, I sort of look at this as our last bastion, you know, that we're hanging on to here, and the, um, as, as development creeps further on to this parcel.
Well, I don't know, as long as there's a blade of grass over there, we're going to hear that about it again.
Any comments from you, Ernie?
That's it.
Okay. Did I get to you guys? Al?
Well, again, to your original, um, comment around the architecture, I think we're very, very positive, much more appealing. We like the fact that we can have green space in this intersection, but I really do like the, kind of, draft proposal that you had, the eyes of the, if there's any way to, high-quality green space.
Okay.
Agree.
Joe?
I, I'm really torn, so, I, I love the, the architectural renderings. I think that, that, that's big progress for it, and I, I appreciate, um, the, the, the modifications to gain some green space. I understand the traffic issues, and I've been, I've been playing with the, the same thoughts that, that Joe has with the, with the ring road and all, and I, I think I understand both your and Wilmerite's perspective to that, so I'm, I'm not sure if I see a, a way forward. In, in, in terms of a, a compromise, it's going to be acceptable to, 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 you know, our thoughts about the green space and the needs to, to site the, the, the building where, where it is. And I'm not sure if there's a way to do this better than what we're being presented with now. I was really enamored of the, the PDFs that you sent, but after the discussions about the roadways today, I'm, I'm not sure if, if that's feasible either, so. I'm, I'm, I'm just not sure where we go with this.
Yeah, well, my comments, my comments were food for thought and to see- what could be, because I don't, I didn't see a layout that you guys put together that addressed that question, so I did it for you, kind of?
Yeah, we did, we, yes, you're, you're correct. I mean, I, I guess the only thing I can add is, and, and this was in the last response letter, and we talked about this, is we, we appreciate the green space and the, in, you know, I think Scott said it, you know, this is the last big green space, but what, what we're ending up with is consistent with the rest of the corridor, and in some cases, it's better than other parts of the corridor. And we, you know, we've worked with this board and we continued to try to squeeze every, you know, bit of frontage out of it that we can. So, I mean, I don't think we're asking for, you know, we're, we're not asking for something that, uh, isn't, doesn't exist today, you know, along the corridor, and again, I'd reiterate, it's better than some other places on the corridor as far as the frontage, green space that is left.
I think the initial comment you received when you came before the board the first time was, this is like the main entrance to the mall.
Yep.
Whatever you do is impacting that, that view, so.
Yeah, and I, and I-
I think you're getting some pushback from the board on why we're concerned about it.
Yeah, and I, and I, and I think our, you know, our response to that is, we, we have continued to work with this board on the elevations. We're hearing some very positive feedback on that. You know, we think we're providing a very robust landscaping plan. I know we're only informal, so we're going to, you know, if we were to proceed, we're going to, you know, get further comments on that, but, um, we, we feel like we've provided a very good product here to help, you know, mitigate some of the concerns. We appreciate, you know, the sketches, but there is some, it's not that you did anything wrong, but, you know, they're just, the, the offset intersections is problematic. I mean, I, I think anybody can appreciate that, 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 that just becomes a, a problem. And even, you know, again, we talk about moving the ring road and we're, we're adding conflict points, which is a point that the board said that they didn't like with having three driveways, so we're, we're just trying to find that balancing act to really address all the concerns.
Okay, Wes, any thoughts or comments? From your, what you've heard here, engineering-wise, I mean?
No, I don't think I've got anything right at this point.
Mr. Logan, one thing I was just going to add is, I think, your, your comment's important, that this is the main entrance to the mall. I think, as the developer in order, we feel that this is what helps us achieve, what keeps us as a great mall, which is a balance between the landscaping and, and bringing a great tenant in that's going to help attract other tenants and patrons, so. I understand what you're saying about, you know, keeping the green space, but, um, as the owner, we do feel this is what's sort of best for the overall property is, is the compromise for both of those for what it's worth.
Yeah, the big, I appreciate that, that, I experienced the mall over the Thanksgiving holiday, that ring road was buried. I mean, it was almost gridlocked all the way through here, and I'm concerned about this attracting more, not that I'm concerned about the fact that you're going to have some good business and, and all of that, which we want, but at the same time, you're putting it right there, and this is, this is closed off. I think when you come before us with your formal application, there's going to be a ton of, what's, what do you see as the resolution to traffic at the holiday season, if it's any different than what you're doing now, for instance? You know, how are you going to address this bigger draw, frankly? You're going to get a lot of people, like, hey, I'm really hungry, I'm going to go to Chick-fil-A from the mall over here, and somebody's going to be over there and they're going to want to drive right there. It's like, it was already gridlocked this weekend. I don't know if there's, not this weekend, but Thanksgiving weekend, so.
Yeah, I, I don't know that we're going to solve the Black Friday issue, but we certainly are open to talking about what our plans are for those peak times.
You can't, you can't design for that.
No.
I'm sorry.
No, understood.
Yeah, I mean, we can't design for that. Unfortunately, I mean, it's a great problem for them to have. It, it obviously shows how successful the mall is, and, and that's what we're trying to continue. I know the board knows this, but, you know, most of the people coming to Chick-fil-A are already coming to the mall, they're already on ninety-six, you know, we're not generating a, a ton of new trips as a part of this.
Could you tell me this, your anticipation of how much of your business is going to be drive-through and how much is going to be sit-down?
Uh, I would, uh-
Half-half?
Yeah, I was going to say, it, fifty, you know, at least fifty percent is, is drive-through.
How frequently with the fourteen of what's, sixty cars?
Thirty.
Thirty? Thirty? At daily occurrence or only on Black Friday?
Uh, I mean, it, it, it can vary, but, I mean, you're going to see that, if, if we do see that, it'll be, you know, it's going to be in the lunchtime or the evening peak hour. You're not going to see it at breakfast time.
Do you have regular occurrence?
If it's extremely successful, I mean, it, it could be, but usually, again, you know, we're talking about a location here in Victor. Currently, there isn't any other Chick-fil-A's at this, in this vicinity, but we're actively working on a site in Penfield. In the future, there could be other sites that, what we've seen in, and I, what we've seen in Rochester was, you know, the first one was built, really busy, the next one's built, they get a little less busy, the, the third one is built, you know, and it keeps, it kind of balances out, so. It's not like everybody's coming to Victor to go to Chick-fil-A, because there's already three others. There might, you know, at the same time, there might be yet another. So, yeah, I mean, that, it really helps balance the market.
On the plus side, on Sunday, it won't be a problem.
And on Sunday, on, yes, it won't be a problem, that's correct.
Not that I haven't wanted to stop there, on the throughway, coming home from my dad's place. It's like, oh, Sunday, really wanted that, anyway.
We'll get one on Saturday and leave on the car.
Well, yeah, that, that would go over great. I don't have the microwave in the car. What can we help you else otherwise with? Answer questions, I, you know, we've been back and forth, and I think we covered architecture pretty well. I think there's a general consensus that you're in the right direction. We'd love to see more green space or some shift in roadways, but it doesn't sound like it's a, necessarily going to work, but.
Okay, um, yeah, I mean, well, again, we have considered it, we'll, I mean, we can take another look, but we, um, you know, we, I, I think you've heard it from me, you've heard it from Eric, this, this plan makes the most sense for them from long-term operation, you know, what, what it looks like today and what it's going to look like in the future.
Would, would Wright turn only out of the, out of the restaurant onto the ring road, alleviate some of the traffic back at that high-street intersection? Direct them up the ring road to the light there?
I got to tell you, if I'm at Chick-fil-A and I'm buying something in the drive-through, I am taking a right and going up to Starbucks. There's no way to get, yeah, if you're going to the mall, that's one thing, but people will naturally do that.
Well, I don't know, you'd think people would, but you see the drivers in Victor, right?
As soon as you make that, your first mistake, you won't do it again.
That's true.
So.
All right.
Anyway. I guess, unless anyone else has anything, and we're-
Okay.
Share your, all the input and the information and the, working with us to try to help us resolve the challenges at that point.
Appreciate the board's time.
Sure.
Thank you.
And, and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, so. That's all that's on the agenda, unless you have anything.
No, we don't have anything.
Okay, motion to adjourn from somebody?
Move.
Ernie moves.
Motion.
Everybody's-
Second.
Going to have a great holiday, everyone.
Thank you, Joe.